On the internet and take a look at it right now if you're at home by your computer. If you don't have access to a computer, you can call the 800 number below. Hopefully we'll get that listed below there and you can call that 800 number and get more information. There's a whole section here on what to do if you find yourself needing to use the emergency room. And I don't think anybody could have told us better than Marjorie here from real life experience.
I am going to take charge of my health.
Welcome to Braille Institute. We are a nonprofit organization. We are here to help people who are blind and visually impaired, people with fading vision. We have many programs and services to offer and we have programs and seminars and workshops where people can learn almost anything. Why we're here is to show people that they can live a rich, full life and do as many things as other people can do. Right now, we are in our creative arts area. This is where people express themselves. And now I'd like to introduce you to Rhonda. She's one of our wonderful art teachers. Rhonda?
Hello, I'm Rhonda Kapwolowski and I teach art at the Braille Institute. Many of our students have never done art before and after they've lost their sight, they end up coming here and they find a whole new world opening up to them. They have a way to express themselves and it's actually very therapeutic for them as they're grieving their loss of sight. For instance, this piece right here was done by a man that has never done art before and he's expressed himself in many materials. He's worked in ceramics, printmaking, tile work, and he says that he believes he lost his sight so he could learn how to do art. So many times when one door closes, another one opens. We have people from all walks of life. I have a student who was a lawyer and never had time for things like art and a group of visitors came to see what he was doing and one of them looked down and said, "You know, I can't do this and I'm sighted." And he said he couldn't do it either when he was sighted because he never had the time or the opportunity to explore artwork before. So our students have a wonderful time feeling productive again when they do their artwork. We have them choose all the colors and it keeps their visual memory alive. They have to do all their setup and cleanup so it helps them with their mobility and the other skills they need to know transfers right into their home life from here where they have to wash up. It helps them in the kitchen. And so our art classes are not only enriching for the soul, but they're enriching their lives in so many ways to help them build their skills that they need after they've lost their sight. The students have many opportunities to show their work outside of Braille. We've done shows at the Department of Transportation and at the Department of Aging. We've had a wonderful show at Forest Lawn Gallery and many other galleries that give us opportunity to show those students' work. We also have a wonderful show here in December and that gives our students a chance to sell their work and we'd love to invite the public to come in and see what they do. We set up a gallery and they have their work for sale and it gives them such an opportunity to feel how productive they are and how they can still contribute to life on the outside of our community. The show we have is called Creative Visions and you can call, it's going to be at the first week in December and you can call us at 1-800-BRAIL for more information when we set up the times and dates. The creative arts classes are just one of the many opportunities that Braille Institute has for our students that have failing vision. They're able to express themselves in other classes like music and other creative process and they have classes that they can get back to work. They learn Braille and they also learn how to work in the kitchen. So the students have many opportunities to get back to work and back to life after coming to Braille. The creative arts classes are one of the many opportunities that the students have at Braille Institute to regain their confidence and opportunities to learn how to live with their vision loss.
In life, some things are pretty much a sure bet. Some things are predictable. And some things, you just don't know unless you have ESP, an emergency survival program that prepares you for emergencies or just the plain old unexpected. You can't predict, but you can prepare.
Then back to me and then he gets in front of me. He puts it around, drops everything in front of me. And what a mess. And I went another way and the lady broke. What a disaster. Oh my God, the dress. No, she's fine. She's sleeping.
Welcome to Braille Institute, a nonprofit organization that has been designed to work with individuals with fading vision. Please come along with us as we explore our Vista store, a store that has many different items and accessories that can support individuals with fading vision. You know, you're having your morning coffee and you like to sit down and read the newspaper, but for some reason the 12-point font is not what it used to be for you. Simple magnification. This happens to be a 35-powered magnifier. You can take it, place it over the article you like to read and voila, simple technology, things that enhance individuals with low vision. Now here's another aid that could be of assistance to you possibly in your kitchen or at your computer. You want to read a simple file, you want to read a simple recipe, you plop your information underneath this screen. It's called a closed-circuit television or CCTV and you enable to enhance the font size to exactly what your eyes are asking for. So I'd like to thank you for coming by and visiting our Vista store. You can reach us by calling 1-800-BRAIL or that would be 1-800-272-4553 or reach us online at www.braillinstitute.org.
As you can see, we have so many opportunities here for people with fading vision. You may know somebody who has fading vision or you yourself may have vision that's not doing so well. Remember, we are here. Come and see us. We are here to help you. Almost all of our students have some vision. Only 10% of people have no vision at all. You could be one of those, somebody with macular degeneration, glaucoma, diabetic retinopathy, or even cataracts. All of those are the people that are here. People with those diseases are the people that are here at Braille Institute. So please, come join us. Your life can be very good again.
Welcome back, everybody. Let's see how Perry's doing with her makeovers.
Okay, right now I'm trying to hide, camouflage the puffiness and using a lighter shadow, shade of concealer inside here and then a darker on top will minimize the look of the puffiness.
So lighter in the receding areas and then darker in the areas at the forefront?
Correct. So you're pushing out the, what's going in, bringing it out and what's out, you're kind of letting it recede. Okay, and next we'll do her lips. And as you can tell, I kind of put a little bit of foundation over her concealer because she wants a fuller lip, so we're kind of make the lips look a little larger. So we're going to draw over, a little over her lip line with a nude pencil.
Yeah, now this is very common for a lot of women, especially as they get older and the lips seem not so full.
Right.
So this technique, then Perry, anybody could really try this and see how it works for them.
Correct, yes.
So starting with a lip pencil below the lip line?
Yeah, you're just kind of camouflaging, you can just do a little below.
And would this also help Perry? I know sometimes, you know, our lipstick will bleed. Does this help with that?
These pencils are really good. They do prevent the bleeding of lipstick, yes.
Yeah, that is an age-old problem.
Right, and you want to stay away from lipsticks that are drying, that stay on because those really dry your lips and as you get older, you lose a lot of that moisture. So you don't want to use something real drying.
So you're looking for something, you know, that says actually moisturizing lipstick?
Well, I would go for the lip glosses and I also like to use, if you ever want a lip primer, you can go to the drugstore and get the Moisture Chapstick. And then I also, you know, you get the high-end department stores, oops, excuse me, Keels, lip balms, and those are the two I use.
So when would you use those? I mean, is that just something you could put on overnight and just leave on and moisturize your lips?
If, like, right now I can use that over the lip, you know, if I was using lipstick, I would use that underneath the lipstick.
Under the lipstick, okay.
Now should I be using a lipstick or should I be using this little?
Pencil. I like pencils. It's just that stays on, you're going to get less bleeding and then you can overdraw your, you know, lip line.
So fill in the lips with a lip pencil too?
Yes, you can.
And then just gloss that up with one of these lip glosses? Okay, well, that's a great tip. I didn't know that, so I'm going to be trying that.
And this will help the lips, it'll stay on longer too.
Perry, tell me, you know, a lot of us with our eyesight failing as we get older, it's very difficult to look in the mirror and to be putting the makeup on at the same time. Any tips for that?
Magnifying mirrors. They have, I know that they have them here at the institute, but yeah, they're definitely a help.
What about matching the lipstick to the clothes?
That's, you know, you would want to complement the makeup. I wouldn't match it to the clothes. You want to stay to earth tones, warm colors because they're a little more youthful. Yeah, so it's better if you don't go too striking on your lipstick or shadows. I use both Estella and Pat Taupe eyeshadows and I didn't use real bright or light eyeshadows. I kept to medium tones, maybe a contour tone and a taupe eyeliner is not real prominent like a black or something real striking or charcoal. Taupe is just softer underneath their eyes.
And good for pretty much any skin tone.
Yeah, yes, so both of them could use a taupe color and very easily wear it. It looks real natural looking.
It does, it looks lovely. So none of these glittery shadows that you see the young girls wearing these days?
No, well, none of these glittery, but you know, yet I did do, their eyeshadow I used did have a little bit of a glossy glitter to it, but it's not too much. And for the medium shade, you, medium tone, you want to make sure that's a very, how do I say?
Even for the evening?
Even for the evening, yeah. You don't want it too, because what happens is it just, it goes into the creases, it emphasizes the crepiness of the eyelid. And so unfortunately, as we get older, our eyelid tends to crepe more in that area and you don't want to emphasize that. You want to kind of not draw attention to the...
So Pat, do you think you've picked up a few tips here?
Definitely. Because I've been doing my makeup the same as I've been doing it for 20 years and obviously it's not going to work at this stage.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, the lip tones lighter, lip tones, Stella may have maybe more of a rose color, but you know, her complexion, she can do that. And it's not really super dark. And for Pat, I choose, you know, to go more neutral, but a little bit of color so it looks nice.
Yeah, really lovely.
What about my eyebrows?
You take one of the brush like this, you brush them up and you go with the brow line and then you just snip the ones that are the long, the long ones. And it's really super, you don't have to do real, just a light and then down.
Maybe this is something you could get done at the hairdressers while you're having your beauty appointment?
Well, they do that, well, actually there's special eyebrow people that you would go to and they have Gal in the Valley and Anne in Beverly Hills that just do eyebrows. So you do have to go to somebody who really knows how to shape them. And also I would, instead of waxing seniors, because waxing can tear the skin if they're on blood thinners, so I would probably, you know, be more to threading eyebrows than I would do waxing.
Well, what do you think? Perry has done a wonderful job. You look absolutely beautiful.
Thank you very much. Oh, you're welcome. My pleasure.
Thanks so much, Perry, for joining us today. I'm sure the ladies have enjoyed it as much as I have. We've certainly learned some tips, haven't we?
Definitely.
Viewers, we're going out on the town tonight. We're all looking our best now, so I hope you've learned something as well today. We're looking forward to seeing you next time on Aging Well in L.A.
However, for people with disabilities, it's especially critical that we take the necessary steps to ensure our survivability. In Los Angeles, approximately 1.2 million individuals have some type of disability. It may be you, a family member, a neighbor, or a coworker. There are three important steps to prepare for an emergency. First step, have an emergency supply kit at home, at work, and in the car. If you have children or children with disabilities, make sure their school has an emergency supply kit to assist your child in the event of an emergency. Step number two, create a family emergency plan and practice, practice, practice. Be sure to include all family members and out-of-state contact in these drills and inquire about your child's school emergency plan. And step number three, learn about and keep informed about different types of emergencies that could occur in your area. You should ensure that you're able to survive alone for a minimum of three days with water, food, and any necessary medication or equipment that you utilize for your specific disability. Your emergency supply kit should include copies of important documents such as medical insurance cards, prescriptions for medications or eyeglasses, instructions on how to operate your specific equipment, driver's license, financial documents, and pictures. For your pet or service animal, be sure to include extra food, water, and treats, medications, a first aid kit, additional collar with ID tag, and an extra harness or leash. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
G'day, Troy McCavan from North Hollywood.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, October 4th, 2011. Welcome to the first meeting of October and a little bit of a wet day out there in Los Angeles, but thanks to all the members of the public who have taken time out of their day to join us here in city council chambers. We're here in Room 340 of City Hall, John Ferraro Council Chambers, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the week, except during our brief recesses. And again, want to welcome not only members of the public, but also our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings live throughout the city's cable system. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by council members Mitch Englander, Tom Le Bonz, Jan Perry, and Dennis Zine. We have five members that are here with us in chambers. We're waiting five more to begin our meeting since it takes two-thirds or 10 members of our body to constitute a quorum and to conduct business. Not only are we available through the city's cable system, but also online for your convenience. If that is an easier way for you to follow city council, you can log on to lacity.org and click on the links to the live streaming video of our council meetings. And we also archive our past council meetings for the public's convenience as well. Also online at our city's website is our agendas. Those are made available to the public three days in advance or one day in advance for our special items in accordance with the Brown Act, the state law, for our open and public meetings. We also have all the materials that are available for council members, available for members of the public to read as well, so that you can be informed and follow the decision-making process here at city council. Finally, if you're not close to a television or a computer, you can always use your telephone to listen to our council meetings. And you can call into city, sorry, council phone, which is a service of the city and that number is 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen into any of the council meetings and any of our committee meetings as well. And of course, you can always come here in person to City Hall to testify or to listen to city council. If you live closer to Van Nuys or San Pedro, we open up the city council chambers in those two locations to make it more convenient for our residents who live closer to there, save some time, traffic, pollution, and listen into the city council remotely. And also you can testify remotely from those locations as well. We have a couple excused council members today. Councilmember Alarcon is excused today. We also expect Mr. Parks in at 11:00 and Mr. Reyes in at 10:30. That means that we are still awaiting the following council members who are now late, if they will please make their way to council chambers as soon as possible. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Corretts, Councilmember Krikorian, Councilmember Rosendahl, and Councilmember Wesson, if you'll please join us and as soon as we have that quorum, we'll begin. One last note, if you wish to be heard on any of the items that are before us today, all items on the agenda are grouped into categories of items that have already had public hearings or those that have not yet had public hearings and are agendized for them. You can fill out cards for any item, but it's only the ones that have not yet had a public hearing that automatically trigger a public hearing. It requires council to reopen public hearing for items that have already had that in committee. We also have a section of the council meeting for general public comment and that is for items that aren't on today's agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And if you just want to fill out a speaker card for any of those individual items or general public comment, you put your name up there, say which item in the upper right corner, and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms or city staff at our remote locations and we'll make sure that that gets into the mix for today's meeting. There is a podium here and a clock on the podium to help guide your time. It's about two minutes usually per speaker. We appreciate your keeping in time with that and that should help you guide your statements as well. Finally, I know we have, and we're going to be saying something about it shortly, we have a great group of volunteers that are helping out. It's UCLA Service Day throughout the city and we have many great UCLA Bruins who are with us today, helping out not only just here in council chambers, but throughout our city and we welcome them and thank them for their service. Again, thank you to the council members that are here, council members Englander, Weezer, Le Bonz, Perry, Wesson, and Zine. With that, we are at seven members, awaiting three more of the following, council members Cardenas, Corretts, Krikorian, and Rosendahl. So as soon as they are here, we'll begin the meeting. Thank you for your patience while we wait those late council members. This is another quorum call, council members Cardenas, Krikorian, and Rosendahl. We are now at eight members, awaiting two more, council members Cardenas, Krikorian, and Rosendahl, if they'll please join us as soon as possible. Thank you. It's after 10:10 now, quorum call for council members Cardenas, Krikorian, and Rosendahl. Please join us as soon as possible so we can begin the meeting. If you fail to reach a quorum, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We have nine members still in the form, attempt fifteen, we will have to adjourn for the quorum. Still awaiting council members Krikorian and Cardenas to begin our meeting. It is two minutes before. Mr. Caretz, I know you're going to be speaking on item 44 about UCLA Volunteer Day in the city of Los Angeles. Do you want to give us a little bit of background on what that is? Not to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot a little. Councilmember Caretz, thank you, appreciate it.
So I take it we are trying to stall a little bit for time in a quorum, and so I will do--
Not at all, Mr. Caretz. I'm interested in UCLA Volunteer Day with deep appreciation.
Well, I'm happy to start a little bit before the regular presentation. I do want to point out that UCLA has provided hats for everyone on the council. I'm sure all of us will wear them proudly. As a member of the UCLA alumni community, it's exciting for me to be part of this new tradition known as UCLA Volunteer Day. This year is the third annual UCLA Volunteer Day event. It had the largest participation in the university's history, with more than 7,000 Bruins, alumni, faculty, and staff visiting over 20 locations in Los Angeles. And by most estimates, this is the largest single-day volunteer event ever held by an educational institution. And a darn good one, from my point of view. It's a true pleasure to see all of the volunteers in their yellow and powder-blue shirts at Emerson Middle School, located in my district, painting classrooms and basketball backboards on the campus. These Bruins serve as great examples for the middle school students and other students and the community people throughout Los Angeles, and I'm very proud of UCLA and all the volunteers. So we say, "Go Bruins," and they're a great example to the rest of the city in their volunteerism.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caretz, and Mr. Weezer, and then Mr. Labange. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I too want to thank UCLA for engaging in Bull Heights during the Volunteer Day at Breed Street Elementary School. They also beefed up some murals and painted, and there were hundreds of people there to enjoy giving back to the community, but it was all spearheaded by UCLA. I want to thank our chancellor for having the vision to have UCLA out in our community, support volunteerism, so that our young people, such as Breed Street, when they see other adults coming in their school, cleaning it, painting it, they see that they too can go out and volunteer and give back to their community. Thank you so much, UCLA. Your efforts in our communities cannot be understated. You are out there engaging where it matters, so thank you so much. My hat's off.
Caps off.
My caps off to UCLA, but I will proudly wear that as a UCLA Law School alum. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I just want to rise University of California, Los Angeles, which formed here as a southern branch of the University of California, Berkeley. But when they came here, they first were out at Vermont Avenue at City College, and they moved to Westwood in 1929 to get away from the city. And the city grew around them. But they never forgot the city and the volunteer days that they have, and the freshmen from throughout the country and the world participate as a program. Just recently, in Griffin Park and the historic Ferndale section, over 300 Bruins were there to show their care for the community and for the park system. So I'm very proud of UCLA and their team that's here, Felicia especially, for she's a hiker regularly in Griffin Park, but the whole team from UCLA. And I'm proud of my mentor, Milt Davis, who was a Bruin, graduate of Jefferson High School, all Southern League B football, and had great education at City College to get a scholarship to UCLA and to be educated well there. Go Bruins, go number 39. God bless Milt Davis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Krikorian is just exiting the elevator right now. It is 10:15, so we will begin the meeting as soon as he walks in, chambers. And Madam Clerk, when he is here, we'll call the roll and begin the meeting. Colleagues, we have before us today, we have 45 items that we're going to be addressing. And there are, there's one ordinance which we will need 12 members for, but we do expect 12 members by 10:30, so we'll be able to take that up. Please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Caretz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Krikorian moves. Mr. Caretz seconds, without objection. Those are approved. Next order of business.
Communitary resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer moves. Mr. Englander seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, would you like to the flag salute?
Absolutely. If I can ask everybody, please rise in council chambers for our Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Englander, will you be kind enough to lead us?
With the microphone, please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can run through the agenda, colleagues, any items you wish to call special? If I can direct your attention. First items, please.
Items 1 through 14, our Department of Building and Safety lanes knows for public hearing. The department reports that item 7 may be received and filed in as much as the lanes have been paid.
Okay, I'll move to receive and file 7. Any cards on any of these?
On 1, 5, and 12.
Okay. We will call those special for cards and close the public hearings on the others. Anybody wishing to call any specials on those that are not yet called by cards? If not, let's open up the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved, with the exception of 7, which was received and filed. Next items, please.
Items 15 through 33 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, colleagues, anybody wishing to call those special? I'll call 33 special. Other specials? Yes, Mr. Caretz?
I'd like to call item 26 special.
26 for Mr. Caretz. Other specials, colleagues? No, let's go ahead and open the roll then on the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 34 through 45 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration. Item 34 is an ordinance. Would you like to hold that on the desk for 12?
Yes, please. If there's no objection to consideration, these are now before us. Do we have cards from public on any of these?
Mr. President.
On items 35 and 36.
Okay. And Ms. Perry?
I wanted 36, but you have cards on it, so that's okay.
Okay. Call it special for you as well. Mr. Caretz?
I'd like to call item 44 special.
All right. We'll continue our Bruin Day with item number 44.
Excuse me, President, there's also cards on item 41.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards on the public, or that one special for cards on the public. We'll close the other public hearings, and if there are no other specials, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. We'll next go to our general public comment. Michael Hubman is our first speaker. After that will be Donna Perman in Van Nuys. Good morning, sir.
Hello. I'm Michael Waterman-Hubman, and I have joined the Occupy L.A. movement. We are peaceful. We are diverse. We are democratic. We govern ourselves by consensus. We are in this for the long haul. We are focused on economic justice. We believe that we have a lot more to lose by our inaction than the dominant equal power, economic power structure can take away from us by putting ourselves on the line. We are putting our time, our resources, and our bodies on the line to call attention to the gross inequity of the political and economic structures that dominate us and have corrupted our democracy. We believe that the forces that corrupt our democracy are acting out of greed and lust for power. These forces are acting only for their self-interest, so as to enrich themselves to the detriment of the rest of humankind. We no longer believe that the American dream is to get rich like them. We believe that the global race to the bottom for the benefit of the economic ruling class will spell doom for humanity. We are willing to share our resources with our brothers and sisters, so that we all can have a minimum standard of life and dignity. We believe that class warfare has been waged on us since the beginning of our country. We are ready to fight back. Economic justice, unlike police brutality and the civil rights of homeless people, my issues is not something that might interest only a small circle of friends. Economic justice is everybody's issue. We are the sleeping giant who will awaken to shake off our oppressors. We must do this, or we are doomed to sit and cook in the wicked stew of crony capitalism and debt slavery. We, the people, are too big to fail. Viva economic justice!
Thank you very much, Mr. Hubman. Appreciate your comments this morning. Donna Perman is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that will be Noel Weiss. Good morning.
I'm back. Anyway, my dad was--
Good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. I missed you too. My dad was from UCLA, got his master's degree in social worker. Go UCLA! And happy holidays for the ones, for the people that are Jewish, for the Jewish holidays. Happy holidays to Eric Garcetti and Jan Perry. And Miriam is visiting her father for the Jewish holidays. Anyways, hate to tell you, it was wrong of you to lose quorum last week. People take the time out of their busy days to come speak, and some of the council members, it doesn't seem to be important to you. So you have to remember to make quorum each and every time. It's wrong not making it possible to have all city employees have retiree healthcare. You should not have had conditions, other concessions on that. It should have been just one item. You should have made just only one retiree healthcare. You made it a lot harder than it should have been. The city employees, it's not the city employees' benefits that's making the city broke. It's the City Council's special projects, the CRA, MTA, CAO, CLO, and of course, the City Council's salary and perks. Most of the city employees make it, make only a middle-class salary. They don't make more than the private sector equivalent. Unions are important. Employees need someone to speak for them. The highly-paid supervisors would not give what's due to the city employees who work hard, I mean, all employees who make it, work hard, give their all to make wherever they work go smoothly. We deserve a fair paycheck, good annual and sick leave, healthcare, pensions. All the ones who work hard for the middle class who are also taxpayers, people don't seem to remember that city employees, federal employees, state employees, county employees also pay a fair share of their taxes, which make our country or state or city go smoothly. And thank you. Good to see you again.
Thank you, Donna. You too. Noel Weiss is our next speaker, and then Sean Murphy in the Valley will be the next speaker. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I wanted to give a big shout-out to Bill Rosendahl in particular, but also Bernard Parks, Mr. Englander, Mr. Cardenas, for their hopefully killing the terrible ACE program that our city attorney is promoting. Basically, why we need such a needless bureaucratic thing, and that's to put it mildly, when there's such a simple solution? And the simple solution is frankly, if Mr. Caretz is concerned about overnight parties or whatever, take the particular code section and just make it an infraction. Period, end of story. Then the police give the ticket, and you know what? You've got a whole court system that'll basically take care of it, just like they take care of traffic tickets. Talking about code violations for building and safety and things of that nature? Require anybody who sells their property to record against, to record under penalty of perjury against the property title, a statement that the property complies with all codes. Then that puts the burden on the buyer and the seller to make sure that you've got code violations. Provide for a diversion. There are a lot of people in this city who don't even know what the rules are. And to empower one individual, be it Trutonic or anybody else, with this kind of power is simply wrong. So that's my comment on that. And again, Mr. Parks, I think, made some great comments, and I appreciate, again, Mr. Rosendahl's leadership on that issue. Secondly, with regard to the social compact, I'd like to read in the paper the fact that members of this council go out and talk to those people that are camped out at City Hall. You know what? Because honestly, there but for the grace of God go I. There are, I remember the South Central farmers. I think those, that's us. And you know what? With all due respect to all of you, every one of you is a political accident, every single one of you. And it could just as easily be you as them. And I think it's important, bring them in. Have a special session. I mean, the mayor, he's looking for photographs every which way. How come nobody is out there? I mean, I think Mr. Alarcon went, and that's it. And you know what? It's wrong. This is a critical moment in our nation's history, and I think our political leadership needs to stand up and promote that debate, and so far, I don't see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean Murphy is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that will be Dr. Tom Williams, back here. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council. We need more streets paved. There's a big pothole on Langashim and Mole Park. I think Tom, I think my councilman noticed it last week when he went to the memorial service. It's just right, right in the middle. That has to be repaired. Somebody's going to fall and break their necks. I just thought I'd let them know. Also, we're still waiting for the Laurel Canyon Commercial Corridor. What's going on with that? It's, I spoke to you about it four years ago. That's all. Thank you. And I'll be back downtown next week. I had to pay a water and power bill today.
Mr. Murphy, where is the address of that pothole?
It's out, it's right next to St. Charles Barmaio's Catholic Church. It's between, it's right next to it.
Okay, thank you. We'll work with your council member and the city staff to see if we can get that filled. Next, Dr. Tom Williams.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council from El Serrano. I went to Berkeley a long time ago, 1966 through 78. So Occupy L.A., well, we occupied people's park. However, during the last couple weeks, I've had a change of mood somewhat, because my son, who was born in Berkeley in 1970, died recently of cancer. That affected me considerably. But then I remembered, we just pledged allegiance to the flag, and part of that says liberty and justice for all. Justice for all. Over the weekend, two American citizens were killed by the U.S. government in Yemen. U.S. citizens. Why? Was there due process? Was there justice for all? I don't know. Was there justice in Berkeley? I know there wasn't. Was there justice, will there be justice in L.A.? I don't know. I wonder when the tear gas will come, because we got kind of used to it. It's really not all that bad, once you get used to it. But in Yemen, two American citizens were killed by the U.S. government, and there's no recourse. There was no trial. They were not found guilty of any crimes by a jury of their peers. Where was due process? Where was justice for all? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Very sorry to hear about your son as well. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that will be Hon. Sachs.
John Walsh.
Good morning.
Logging at Walsh Confidential. You are the 1%. We are the 99%. Occupy L.A.? Yesterday, today, you are surrounded by tents. Occupy City Hall. What we are asking for, because there must always be a demand, and I am the spokesman for Occupy movement, because we are all the spokesmen. We are asking this council, right now, to declare a special, or a motion, a special motion to back Occupy L.A. All of you liberals, where is Mr. Rosendahl? You make the motion, or you're a phony liberal. We invite you, after the meeting, to come down, and we will give you a tour. Only Mr. Alarcon has come. And I'm going to tell you why they're not going to do it, especially Garcetti, because we are criticizing the President of the United States, and you want campaign contributions, and you want favors from the President of the United States. This is it. Before, it was just John Walsh coming down here and saying, for 40 years in California, since 1971 in Berkeley. Now, the numbers are growing. We're surrounding you, black, white, brown, everybody. And they sit here, and you know the big issue today? Whether to raise the price of the zoo. You are the zoo. And I want you to know that the President of the United States-- And I want you to know that the President of the United States says Occupy LA. I am the president. Join us. HollywoodHighlands.org. Walsh Confidential.
Yes, thank you, President Obama, for making the appearance. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, just a point of order. I certainly agree with what's going on across the country. We have big issues, and I appreciate the public involvement. And of course, if a motion adds to the gravitas of it, I will put a motion in for that. I think it's time the American people were given the rights that we believe so much in. I'm very worried, you've heard me say this for quite a while, about what this economic downturn has become.
Excuse me, Mr. Rosendahl, that's not on the agenda.
Anyhow, I understand, but I'll move forward with that.
Great, thank you very much. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker, and after that will be Veronica Ramirez Duran. If I can ask folks to please respect the other speakers.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. It's amazing how speakers can come up here and have differing opinions on some of the councilmen, because I might have grave concerns about some of the remarks Councilman Parks made regarding the fiasco that's occurred at the Coliseum, where how we went public in asking for removal of two of the people that were hired to work at the Coliseum, when it's a personnel matter that should have been heard in closed session. Now the two people have taken a leave of absence. So they're getting paid after they screwed over the public. It's just amazing that those kinds of remarks would be made from somebody who's so conditioned to have enclosed-session item on personal, on personal matters. Here's an article for you, Mr. Rosendahl. You might want to look at this. This is in, from Saturday's paper. How to Get Kicked Off an Airplane. Might want to make a motion on what's the contents of this article. And again, I go back to AEG, and they're, they had pronouncements, they had a hearing here at the Ronald Reagan Building about how they're gonna address the greenhouse gases or the, how they're gonna address transportation issues. And it was mentioned that they're gonna widen, they're gonna lengthen the Pico Blue Line Station. So I ask again, maybe somebody from the council can step up and say, well, lengthening the Blue Line Station, that's all wonderful, but what does that say about the train? Are they gonna lengthen the train? And if they lengthen one station, are they gonna lengthen all the other stations? Well, of course they're not. So what the hell is their good motion, their goodwill? What goodwill are they developing by saying they're gonna lengthen the Blue Line Station? Who does that benefit? Well, it benefits them. But no councilman and no politician has stepped up and said, that's the stupidest thing I ever heard of. Oh, wait, it's not the stupidest thing.
Thank you. Veronica Ramirez Duran will be our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Veronica Ramirez, and this is regarding—
Would you just move the microphone down a little bit, so we can hear you a little better? Thank you.
Okay. My name is Veronica Ramirez Duran, and I'm a homeless mom, and this is regarding the Union Rescue Mission and also Hope Gardens, that's run by CEO Andy Bales and also Scott Chamberlain. I'm a single mom with three children, Robert, Maria, and Bobby. I'm a homeless because I left a domestic violence relationship. I grew up in a domestic violence house. Being homeless is very hard. I went to the Union Rescue Mission in Skid Row downtown, and they have a wing called Hope Gardens. Women at Hope Gardens Homeless Shelter are bused from the Union Rescue Mission. This is how they cleaned up Skid Row. They bused the homeless from downtown and put them in North Hollywood in Silmar. It's a fact, because I was on the bus that went to Hope Gardens in Silmar. I was beat up very bad by a lady who worked at Hope Gardens Shelter. I was beat up because I'm Mexican. She said, once Mexicans starts coming, they all start coming. She told me Mexicans are only good to clean toilets or yards. When Andy Bales, the CEO of Hope Gardens, and also the Union Rescue Mission, found out, he said, don't tell anybody what happened here, because you might get it closed down. I don't know what my rights are, but I just want you to know how CEO Andy Bales treats the homeless. He interviews you first before you talk to the press, or you will get kicked out. And when you're homeless with kids, you don't want to get kicked out. I hope you take my letter into consideration. Thank you. I'm a homeless mom, and I don't have a job problem, just a part-time job. My son just left to go fight for the marine, in the Marines, to go fight for our country. And this is my other little son. And now I'm a homeless activist. I just got a full-time job, and I'm working for Homeboys Industries. But I would like to shed light on people that really go into the homeless programs. And before you donate to the homeless, Hope Gardens, do your homework on people that really help, like LA Family Housing Helps. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar?
We'll go out and speak to the speaker to see if there's anything that we can do about the issues you raised. Thank you so much.
And thank you for your son's service as well. We appreciate that. Arminak Nohajanian is our final speaker for general public comment.
Respectable city council members, dear fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminak Nohajanian. I'm a liberal Democrat, Texan, spent kind of liberal, and I run for the seat of California State Assembly. I propose raising taxes 50% against wealthy corporations and rich individuals, in order to replace state coffers, in order to redistribute that wealth to working poor. And I should propose building more of those Section 8 affordable housing buildings, at the expense of raising taxes against wealthy oil and gas corporations, and distributing that wealth to working poor. It's a pity that Proposition O failed by, but 49% of those who voted for Proposition O in the city of Los Angeles are my potential electorate. 56% of those Californians who voted for rejecting Proposition 19 last year, rejecting legalization of marijuana, are my potential voters, who vote for me. And I believe that the city of Los Angeles should stop that illegal practice of allowing sales of illegal harmful narcotic marijuana to the general public, because it violates Federal Controlled Substances Act, which was adopted in Congress in 1974, and signed by US President. And I believe that this illegal, and due to the corruption of drug enforcement agents in Santa Monica Building, the federal building, only these so-called medical marijuana dispensaries go unpunished. They should be closed, and I demand the city council adopt a resolution, unlike previous resolutions, to close, shut down those medical marijuana dispensaries. They cause great harm and loss of revenue to all those legal businesses, legal pharmacies, and the ruin of Angelino public. And also, promise to give six months free pregnancy leave to all Californian women at the expense of state government.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nohajanian. Thank you for your comments. That'll close our general public comment. We need to reconsider Item 39. If we can open the roll on that, for cards in the public. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
We'll call that special for cards in the public. Mr. Labange has asked for Item 41 out of order. Then we'll go over to you, Mr. Coretts, to finish up some of your presentation after. Mr. Labange is gonna go first, and then we'll come to you. He's gonna do Item Number 41. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, members, I just think this is real important, as we have an all-day budget day, we have an all-day infrastructure day, and give all departments time to schedule till we look at it, so we focus on infrastructure. Thank you. Just want the CAO and the CLA to prepare and all of that. And all the top opportunity for jobs from many approved programs, but they may get stuck in the pipeline that we could help shepherd them along. January 2012.
Okay, thank you very much. And we do have a card on this. Mr. Dr. Tom Williams, if you'd like to come forward.
Dr. Tom Williams, formerly with Parsons Corporation, doing infrastructure for almost 40 years. Infrastructure. Please delete buildings, they're not infrastructure. Parks, if you're going to include parks, include recenters and schools, bridges and tunnels. How about the gas? Gas is infrastructure also. Railroads, so modify it some and improve it, because it provided me with 40 years of good employment, but also operations and maintenance. That's the real key. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. That will close our general public comment. Let's open the roll in Mr. Labange's motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
As approved. Mr. — Thank you. Mr. Coretts, Item 44. Like to continue. A very painful day for Mr. Kirkorian and Ms. Perry, as we celebrate the Bruins here in—
Should I do this from up front?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Well, it's my pleasure, as a proud Bruin, again, to recognize UCLA for their Volunteer Day. We made part of the presentation already, but I'll just remind everyone, this is their third annual Volunteer Day. 7,000 Bruins fanned out across the city at over 20 locations and did all kinds of good work. And this was estimated to be the largest single-day volunteer day by an educational institution ever anywhere. I'd also like to give a special thank you to Antoinette Mongelli, the executive director of the UCLA Volunteer Center, and David Bloom, the center's assistant director, for their tireless efforts in coordinating this amazing event that produced both immediate and lasting impacts across the city. Additionally, I know there are some people here today who participated in the event, and I'd like to ask that they all stand up in the audience and be recognized for their wonderful work. So I'm proud to be part of this important event. Thank the university and the UCLA Volunteer Center for their continued presence in the LA community, and go Bruins. And if you come up here, we'd like to make this presentation too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as you're coming up, Mr. Labange, I'd like to turn the microphone over to you.
I just wanted to say, it's okay on my time, if you want to share that with UCLA, the great job they did. I can't tell how nice it is to see the fresh men and women of the school who were there in the park, getting their hands dirty, cleaning up nature, which connected them to the city, which is such a wonderful idea. So you can use the microphone. I'll give you a little of my time right there.
Thank you very much for this amazing honor. What we try to aspire is for new Bruins to become civic leaders. So this is a good testament of where we want our Bruins to be, if not today, tomorrow. So thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you. And Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to UCLA, Felicia, I want to acknowledge and thank you. You have a great program with the ROTC. You recently assisted a resident who had a child who wanted to get into UCLA. You accepted that student in the ROTC. You've got a great program, great student, great academics, great hospital, just great everything over there in the West Los Angeles area. So I want to acknowledge for all the great work you do, and especially your government relations, folks, really help out. When we have an issue, they're always there to help and resolve the issue. So thank you, Felicia. Thank you for your help. And to all of you at UCLA, and to our Bruin council member, who's always ranting and raving. He's a big baseball fan, a big sports fan. He plays, he doesn't play Major League, he just plays like Pony League ball, but he's still there playing ball, helping out. So congratulations to you for this great honor today. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, a second.
Second time. Also, UCLA men, the program we have for our veterans, those veterans who are severely injured in the war, in the wars, that come in UCLA, what you're doing there. Explain a little about that program, if you would, please. UCLA Medicine Center is joined nationwide.
You mean the Project Men?
Yeah, Project Men.
Project Men is a program with the VA, and what we do is, we literally try to rebuild vets in facial surgery. So it is an incredible program. We adopt the whole family, it's not just the vet, and we stick with them until they're ready for, to go back to their homes, wherever it might be in the country.
Some of them have serious injuries to their faces, their body, and UCLA is there for them. So that's a great program, too. I wanted to mention that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will, oh, Mr. Reyes, another Bruin.
I just stepped in and caught this momentous occasion. First, I want to thank you for your hard work. Couple of weeks ago, I had about, maybe 200 Bruins?
At least.
At least. I'd say maybe 300. Okay, we'll amp it up. But we were at Hermosa Park, colleagues. Hermosa Park, Hermosa Vista, is a new park that's out of Conservancy, along with the hard work of council. Then, board of, of, the president of the school board, with the alley-unified school district, we put together a strategy, and we put, I guess, about 40 acres of park space, right in the heart of Los Angeles, off of Second Street, near Belmont, the old Belmont School, now the Roy Baal, Ed Roy Baal Learning Center. And we had busloads of Bruins. It was great to see the blue and gold in downtown, and they were out there cleaning up, they were digging up dirt to put in plant life. And it's just, what was cool, I asked them, how many of you come from the inner city? And a few hands went up. The majority that didn't were having, I think, an eye-opening experience of being near downtown and seeing this great, great city from a different perspective. So I want to thank you for your energy. UCLA is in LA, and it's in South Central, South LA, East LA, it's in Lincoln Heights. It's here, near downtown, and I want to thank you for that. And again, thank you, Paul, for making sure we have this presentation, though it's in your district, but you have a strong supporter as a fellow Bruin. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, my district is right on the edge of UCLA, and a lot of the students live in the 11th district, a lot of the professors live in the 11th district, and the administration. You engage yourself in every aspect of my district, helping the homeless, you've been engaging that, you've been on the beach, helping clean it up. You have added an energy that we all appreciate greatly. God bless UCLA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you again, Mr. Coretts. With that, we're gonna take a vote on this. Again, this is a non-binding vote for Trojans. You're not gonna, we encourage you to embrace the Bruin love. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Unanimous. Bruins have brought people together. This is a historic day in Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts. All right, if we can go, we have an ordinance that we are holding, I believe, Item 34. We now have 12 members. If we can go ahead and open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Mr. Coretts, do you want to take Item 26, or do you want to hold on the table for a second? Yeah, sure, go ahead, go ahead. You do that, we'll bring it back. If we can take then Item 33 out of order briefly. Mr. Zine, take the chair.
Number 33, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Rosendahl, our transportation chair, Mr. Reyes, who's been a great champion, were definitely there in spirit, as was Mr. Labange, and Ms. Perry and myself, and Mr. Weisar just came from a press conference publicizing our third Siquevía in the city of Los Angeles, which want to thank all of the council for being a huge part of in the past. Siquevía, for those who are uninitiated, is about reopening our streets. Some people think it's about closing down streets, but the best quote today was from one of the advocates, said it's actually opening the streets, so that if you're a pedestrian, you don't, who's an 84-year-old grandmother who feels unsafe, sometimes dodging the cars, Sunday you're gonna feel safe. If you're a cyclist, who wonders if a car is gonna recognize and give you three feet on the passing as they go by you, it's a day that you can feel safe. If you want to get in your skateboard, or you want to get your roller blades on, you this weekend can enjoy this city all over again. Siquevía, which is modeled on Siclovía, which came out of South America originally, is about economic development, sustainability, alternative modes of transportation, but most of all, it's about community. There is no beginning and no end, and it expands this year in Ms. Perry's district, the south, where we're going to a little spur in South LA, down Central Avenue. But we also take in some of the best neighborhoods in Council District 1, Council District 13, Council Districts 9 and 14, so that you can see Little Tokyo and MacArthur Park, and East Hollywood, where there's a bicycle district, Boyle Heights, places where folks can see just how wonderful this city is. An estimated 100,000 people attended last Siquevía, and this Sunday's event is likely to draw as many, if not more, with an expanded route, as I mentioned. Over the past year, the council's approved new bicycle plan, laid down bike lanes and sharrows. It's now hosting its third Siquevía, the largest of its kind anywhere in the United States. Here in the car capital of America, a bicycle revolution is happening, and also a revolution in which we take our streets and allow people to have yoga classes, play dodgeball, have bands playing, and there's a lot of stops this year that are entitled, so you don't race from one end to the other, but that you actually come through and make this happen. Now, the money that was before us for $200,000 to sponsor this today does not come from our general fund, it comes from Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Trust Fund. We have private donors that have been a part of this as well and continue to, and this cash balance will allow us, we're looking also, one of the things I'd like to add to this, if we can get a report back on some of the economic impact, folks know kind of instinctively, we have people coming from six counties now to attend this, from outside the city of L.A., spending their money in Los Angeles and being a part of this. And just like the last two times in which we've used both public money and private money, that continues to be a model, and I think increasingly, working through the mayor's office, special initiatives, et cetera, there are foundations that have given in, there are companies that have given in, and this brand continues to grow. And so I think we all look forward to taking this different parts of the city and continuing that public-private partnership as well. I can't think of a better use of the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Trust Fund, which is a funding source that we use to reduce emissions. And so quite literally, every person who comes out will be not only reducing emissions, but will be coming on, in this case, public transportation. One of the things that was announced today is that MetroLink, for the first time, is creating bicycle cars, which they've taken out some seats on some of the cars of MetroLink, and they have room for 30 bicycles, so that you can come from anywhere of the six counties that MetroLink touches to downtown Los Angeles, and also there's an extension in Mr. Weezer's district to Alvera Street this year. So you can literally link up right there from Union Station, go see Alvera Street, go see Little Tokyo, go see Boyle Heights, go see East Hollywood, go see MacArthur Park. So I ask that you approve the Transportation Committee report, this has worked its way through committee, and is a great use of our funds, not only is for economic development to be that magnet, and as I said, and I'll close on this, Ciclavia is the kind of event where if you go out there, I guarantee you, you will fall in love with the city all over again. We hope to see you out there on Sunday, and go to Ciclavia, that's C-I-C-L-A-V-I-A.org for more information, and we're still looking for volunteers, so thank you to everybody who has made these so special.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti, this is, I stand in strong support for this, because I just want to create a context. Just recently, we passed the bicycle plan, which is a citywide network of routes that now has real legal standing in our general plan. Now, physically, on Seventh Street, we were able to eliminate one car lane for a bicycle path, on Seventh Street, starting from downtown going west. This is a major step in a direction that speaks to not just a lot of verbiage about how great bikes are, but real transformation. This function today does not only achieve all of the goals and milestones that Councilman Garcetti speaks to, but what it begins to do is allows for the kind of linkage, an economic linkage, that introduces our neighborhoods to people who do not know Los Angeles. They know Los Angeles through the media, they know Los Angeles through the movies, and it's not usually positive, but when they come to Ciclavia, they see moms and pops running their down-home cooking in their local restaurants, they see Main Street introduced in many of our corridors throughout this bike path, but more importantly, they get to see the historic structures, the history that made Los Angeles, the edges that were forgotten because we moved out into the suburbs, but these are people who are learning about what their grandparents went through when they started in Los Angeles, if not in the early 1900s, the 1920s, the 1940s, because that's what these neighborhoods represent. Now, this is a great engine for stimulating dollars in our streets, so it is much more than just a good day, because that's what it is, it's a great day. It is beginning to drop seeds in people's minds about what they can find and see in the inner cities of our great historic neighborhoods we call Los Angeles. So I want to thank you, councilmember, for putting this forward, for my colleagues entrusting our instincts as a body, as a council institution, in embracing this great bicycle movement. And for that, I thank you, I look forward to seeing all of you, and yes, I will wear my helmet next time, and I advise everyone else to do the same. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weezer, do you have a helmet?
Mr. Reyes has a helmet.
We want to picture Mr. Reyes. I'll give you my Harley helmet, Mr. Reyes.
Well, thank you very much, and I just wanted to stand up and again express that this is really a great thing for the city of Los Angeles in many respects, environmentally, health, public safety, bringing the city together as people explore different parts of the city, but really, it comes at a time when the city is going through a transformation in terms of its bike culture. We have the addition to the general plan, we, last week, we had the ordinance go through to ask the city attorney to create some more bike corrals and many other things, so it is an interesting time for the city of Los Angeles, where we're merging activists and advocates' ideas together with actual city policy to make that possible, but without the advocates and the advocates moving this forward, urging us to do it, and there were many naysayers, we wouldn't have the third year doing this. So we look forward to continue supporting this, whether it's the funds identified by Mr. Garcetti this year or other funds in the future, we must continue to support this very important event that has tremendous payouts for the residents and others in the region in many, many respects. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. It is all about celebrating the city, and if you get on a bicycle, you could absolutely celebrate the city and the architecture of the city, which is so unbelievable. You really see it from a bike that you don't see it from any other form, so I stand to support this, and I thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership, Mr. Reyes always, and Mr. Weezer, it's great to connect the city over the bridges, the beautiful bridges that were developed in the 20s, and the American Beautiful Movement, good job.
All right, thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Garcetti, anything to close? All right, Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Rosendahl, a latecomer, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. Should I put on my UCLA hat?
There you go. You need a helmet when you ride the bicycle.
Bottom line is, this is an amazing new day in the city, and I wanted to come into my district at the appropriate time to do it. I can tell you that folks from the 11th District take their bicycles, go over there, others have been going there. It's very healthy and refreshing for us to realize we don't have to live in the automobile, that we can actually walk, we can ride a bike, we can get to know people. There's nothing better than knowing your community by walking. I love to walk, and I think that the concept of time after time, closing off neighborhoods, closing off blocks, people interact, I do it in Mar Vista with the farmer's market that has become a community, beautiful spot, so the whole idea is fantastic, and I look forward to this year as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and with that, let's take the vote, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item one, call special for carts.
Fourth with on that, I guess, I'm sorry, item what?
Item one, call special for carts.
Number one. Maxie Jones, followed by John Walsh.
I come to say that I inherit some property of my mother's because she passed away on 46th and Broadway, and I had a fence put up around the property, and I feel it's too high, $13,000, $13,400 for a chain link fence around the house, and I don't mind paying, but I just feel it's too high.
Sir, it's your turn to speak, continue if you wish.
Beg your pardon?
It's your turn to speak on this, item number one.
Yeah, I said I inherit some property on 46th and Broadway, and it was burnt down, and when I got it, it was burnt down, and they put a fence up, which was $13,406, and I figure it's too high, you know, for a chain link fence.
Okay, anything else, sir?
That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. John Walsh? And then Ms. Perry? After Mr. Walsh, Ms. Perry.
John Walsh, blog at HollywoodHighlands.org, world ranking of our website, 424,555 in the world. This gentleman before, okay, you should not, you should be charging him $1. He didn't know the rules. The city failed to contact him. I hope that Jan Perry, who is a sister to this brother, will somehow help this gentleman. I'm sure what this gentleman needs is someone to sell that property. That property, sir, is probably worth a couple of million dollars. You're not going to have any problems finding someone to lend you the $16,000 when you find somebody who is involved in real estate. The city of Los Angeles, all issues, and at base, are one of two issues. They come down to race complicated by, by real estate or real estate complicated by race, and this, this issue here is both. I'd like to thank you, and incidentally, folks, come down and join our tour. So far, one city councilman has joined, Dennis Zine, and there'll be media down there, and we're going to...
Mr. Zine, he's not talking about this item. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, I just want you to know that it's the Republican, the right-wing Republican, Tretanich.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And Ms. Perry?
I'd like to continue this item for one week, please.
All right. Colleagues, without objection, continue for one week. Pardon me? I can't hear you.
Close public hearing.
Okay, we're going to close public hearing, and we will continue it for one week. Yes, ma'am. Sergeant Arms, there's a lady in the audience who's, has a question. There's no other cards on this matter, so with that, we will continue one week at the request of Ms. Perry. Next item, please.
Item five, call special for carts.
Number five. Lisa Pearl and Joe Wirtman. Number five. Each have two minutes.
Good morning. Hello?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First of all, it's an honor to appear before you. This is an amazing place you guys work in, a fabulous building, despite the reason we're here. Is there a time limit on this for me?
Two minutes, ma'am, two minutes for you and two minutes for the gentleman.
So the alleged violations that gave rise to the pending lien on our property are without merit. We purchased the property, which is in an HPOZ area. When we moved, after renovation, we moved in in 2002 and noticed water seeping into our property. We contacted a structural engineer, actually, the water was seeping into the garage, which was on the property line. In your packet, you'll notice a letter from the structural engineer where he confirms that the building was compromised due to the water damage. He gave us suggestions for how to fortify that garage, but prior to our ability to do that, the garage literally fell down. The property needed complete renovation when we moved in due to neglect by the previous owner. So we, on the, on the violation of not having a garage, we wanted to have a garage, but it fell. Subsequent to that time, we, with respect to the building of the garage, we had problems with the HPOZ, we live in a historical preservation overlay zone, and finally, when they approved our plan to build our garage on March 9, 2004, unfortunately, due to business and health reasons, we were required to move to Canada for five years. Upon our return, we decided that we would build the garage, but unfortunately, I was diagnosed with cancer and unable to have a garage being built outside our property. We now are in compliance, I have pictures of the garage that are here. The reason why it took so long for us to get our permits was the HPOZ decided to revoke their original letter. Finally, through the intervention of Mr. Robertson at Building and Safety, he was able to get us our permit.
All right, go ahead, sir, your turn, two minutes for you.
Oh.
You have two apiece.
Just to, just to reiterate, the HPOZ is the reason why we were held from being in compliance. Originally, when we built on, bought the property and applied for HPOZ, there was, they overextended and overreached their ability to comment on what we were doing. When we finally finished the property, they would not give us a certificate of occupancy. We had to have Mr. Waxman intervene on behalf of the city to force the fellow that sat at the head of the HPOZ to sign that certificate of occupancy. When the garage imploded, based on what my wife had just said, I went back to the HPOZ to get a permit to redo the garage. They, he insisted that we redo our roof on the house and redo the windows, and that's the only way he would grant a permit on the garage, because he was unhappy with the way the roof looked. The HPO, the city intervened again on my behalf and issued a letter that allowed, that was, had no time limit on it, that allowed the build, then that letter was revoked again this past January, because there was a, different ordinance class, and the HPOZ and the Building and Safety, Building and Safety doesn't like to do anything without the authorization with the HPOZ, and the HPOZ, because I had a previous issue with them, I was very reluctant to go back, and I asked Building and Safety to intervene on my behalf, which is exactly what they did, and...
Here's the garage.
I got to be in compliance, I got the permit, and I built, and that's the garage, it exists, but it took a, it was a, here, want to pass these around?
Keep talking.
It was a very long process, because unfortunately, I don't know if any of you are aware, HPOZs can be very difficult to deal with.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Caretz.
I think we're going to hold this over for one week and try to sort this out, so if we can bring this back next week, my staff and presumably Building and Safety will, will try to sort this item out.
All right, without objection, the matter will be held over for a week. The councilmen for the districts requested it be held over for a week, so this matter's going to continue for one week. Well, if you wish to come back, I would suggest you talk to Mr. Caretz's office to get an answer to that. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 12, call special for carts.
Number 12. Ronald and Florence Miller, two minutes apiece, number 12.
My name is Ronald Miller. We have, we're replying to some citations regarding vegetation on our property. We have tried to comply with the regulations. After the first notice, we hired gardeners who came to trim the vegetation, but it was difficult to give them instructions because of the extreme lack of specificity in the regulations. The only guide was the word excessive, no definition of what excessive meant. After we had the vegetation cut, we asked the inspector to come to the property. He could not tell us whether we had met the requirements, and only said that he would notify us. Subsequently, we heard nothing. We called several times and left messages, but there was no response. The next communication was from a collection agency indicating that we owed more than $2,000. We informed them that we disputed the charge and sent them a letter stating that. We did not believe that the charge was just. The collection agency indicated they would notify the city of our position and that the next step was in their hands. The next communication was the notice of this hearing. We believe that compliance with these regulations is impossible because of their vagueness and extreme lack of specificity. They are therefore unenforceable. Also, some of the citations are based on inaccurate information. We are accused of storing inoperable vehicles on our property in plain view. This is inaccurate because the vehicles are in fact operable, except for one, which is in the back and mostly hidden from view. In addition, these regulations violate several principles of law, including the right to due process, the right to face one's accuser, and protection from selective prosecution.
Sir, it's now...
I give my minutes.
No, ma'am, he gets two and you get two, go ahead, it's your turn. You can continue reading if you wish, but you get your two minutes now.
My name, my name is Florencia. The right of the due process is violated because of the lack of specified appeal process. There is no mention of an appeal process in the original citation, but the only instructions in the original notice had to do with the consequences of non-compliance. The right to face one's accuser is violated because of the system allows malicious prejudiced neighbors to harass anonymously and get away with it. We can provide photographic evidence... We can provide photographic evidence of numerous examples that way, that, I'm sorry, what might be termed excessive vegetation in our own neighborhood, and these households are not being prosecuted. Protection against selective prosecution, prosecution is violated because a decision to prosecute is driven by the malicious anonymous neighbor's decision to harass. The city therefore assumed this malicious motive, and the two-part test for selective prosecution and violation of equal protection is met. The discriminatory effect can be demonstrated by the photographic evidence of the lack of prosecution of others of a different ethnicity, background, or with similar or more vegetation. Since the city assumes the motive and prejudice of the malicious anonymous neighbors, the enforcement of these regulations is motivated by a discriminatory purpose. I have something to say. I notice that when people are speaking here, everybody is doing something else. Everyone is intruding into the person who is supposed to be paying attention to you, and it feels extremely bad to come and stand here and speak to you all and feel ignored. That is some very strange feeling. I guess that's the way the process of law is. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Caretts, then Mr. Reyes. Mr. Caretts?
Yes, I was wondering if we could have, uh, Building and Safety come up and explain the reasons for this lien and rebut any of the comments that you might be able to.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Charles Karibaham. I'm here to represent the Department of Building and Safety on item number 12. Uh, property address 16701 West Addison Street. Uh, this property was cited back in 2009 for, for failure to, uh, remove excessive vegetation and, uh, remove, uh, open storage of, uh, inoperable vehicles. The Department of Building and Safety inspectors, uh, identified it as a violation against the Los Angeles Municipal Code, and noncompliance charges were imposed on the property. Since then, that was 2009, since then, the property owners failed to comply. However, they complied way back in 2000, uh, March 2010. So they went ahead and moved the vegetation, complied with the, uh, the requirements, but they didn't pay the charges involved. So the department is trying to recover the charges for that, those inspections that were performed by building inspectors, and those charges add up to, uh, 2,314. They comprise of a noncompliance fee of $550, a late charge of $1,375, accumulated interest of 336.02, and a title report fee of $53. So although the, the property owners complied, they did not pay the, um, the invoices that were supposed to have paid, been paid within the prescribed time. That's why the, the department is proposing this lien to be confirmed on the, uh, property at 16701 West Addison Street.
Thank you. Mr. Caretts, anything further?
Uh, did we notify them that they owed this money previously?
Yes, we notified them. We, we sent them tax assessors letters. We also informed the collection company to, uh, to try and collect the invoices, but they simply ignored them. We use the address on the, the title report, which we have here as, uh, as, uh, 16701 Addison Street. So based on that, uh, address, we sent it to them, and they didn't respond. They ignored it, and it happens all the time.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise for a second and address, um, the observations we made about the council. I can tell you that, that I'm listening, but I'm also doing two or three of the things at one time. I know my colleagues are at that same place. Uh, there's a lot of, it's a high volume of work on this council. Um, but, and it pains me to know or to think that what you're saying does not have value. It does. Now, you have some people shaking their heads. That's their right to believe what they want, but I know from my point of view, and I know from my colleagues' point of view, they're working hard, and, and essentially, we're doing two or three things at one time. But I am listening. You should know that. The trip here was worth it, and it is something that I take seriously, and I know my colleagues do as well. But time and time again, we hear this, we don't respond, and I just felt compelled to do that this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, on this matter, before us, for a vote, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. Next item, please.
Item 26, call special for Councilmember Caretts.
Number 26, Mr. Caretts, we have a number of cards.
And also, Mr. President, a motion has been circulated.
You want to hear from the cards first?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I'm happy to hear the cards first and then respond.
Jim McQuiston, number 26, Jim McQuiston, followed by Noel Weiss. Mr. State Attorney?
Mr. President, just a reminder to the councilmembers that this is a fair hearing matter requiring the councilmembers to heighten attention to the speaker at the podium or at the monitors at the councilmembers' desks.
Jim, go ahead, sir.
Jim McQuiston, you all have my, uh, statement on this. Uh, this is something that I reluctantly put in because I have to say, the state Supreme Court, the district court, and the state court of appeal have told us, we shouldn't be doing this. We shouldn't be doing this. We have to obey the law, and the law is in the code of civil procedure, and this does not comply because the reasons that it was brought up are not legally pertinent. This was really the most blatant disrespect to the law, our safety laws, that I've seen so far. But we're getting more and more of these things, and we're encouraging people to disrespect the law. We cannot do that in a city this large. We have to tighten up on this, and it's up to the council to go along with our law or else change it. If someone wants a variance, there are strict rules on variances. If you want a zone change, you can do almost anything, but you have to go through the proper procedure to do it. This should have been a zone change if they wanted to do what they are intending, and the council should not be supporting them to try to get around a zone change with a variance, and that's my message on this.
Thank you. Noel Weiss?
Um, number one, um, the motion, again, this is apparently Mr. Caretts' way of doing business. This motion is proposed findings was not even posted before this was called. I think we should, these findings, by the way, are inadequate, uh, for the record. Let me just get into this real quick. The, the case of West Chandler Boulevard versus City of Los Angeles just came down. That case says that the city council does not act as a super zoning administrator. You don't have unfettered discretion to overrule or modify a zoning administrator's decision on a variance situation. That case, and it was a reversal by, in a published opinion by the court of appeal, says you can only reverse a zoning administrator if the zoning administrator either erred or abused her discretion. Nothing in these findings refers to any specific error or abusive discretion by the zoning administrator. Now, the reason for that rule is because, and the city council passed, it's been the rule for a long time. The reason for that rule is it's a check and balance. We don't want to have special interests, which apparently Mr. Caretts serves very well, as is becoming evident, um, special interests walking in here, basically because of that relationship with the city councilperson and getting relief. What we're, what this involves, so the public should understand, is an illegal unit that was built out of a rec room in an R1 area. Not acceptable. It's a violation, and you know what? For the man who endorses this ACE program to come in here on a special interest basis and say, you know what? This particular situation gets special prerogatives. Well, you know what, Mr. Caretts and council? You have to find that that zoning administrator erred. The independence, the integrity of the zoning administration with the planning department is at issue in this case. And Mr. Reyes, I would expect to listen to this as somebody who was and formerly a planner. And if there's anybody that should stand up for the integrity and the independence of the planning department, it should be Mr. Reyes. And this is a very important position and a very important point in terms of citizen empowerment. This should be rejected, and the city attorney should stand up for the people who he said he was going to stand up for when he ran, not the special interest and not this particular situation. Thank you.
Donna Chasenov. Two minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad, uh, Mr. Reyes is listening. Good morning, council. Um, this is very, this is very exciting and nerve-wracking at the same time for me. This is definitely a new experience, and I will be bringing it back to my classroom tomorrow. Now, let's get down to business. At the meeting with plum last week, it seemed to me that the committee was puzzled as to why the variances to legalize a triplex in an R1 street would get this far. Maybe this is a battle between unfriendly neighbors. No, it's not the case. Let me make very clear that we consider Eric and his partner the best of neighbors. Eric approached us numerous times over the last several years to obtain our support. We had many nice conversations. And as I turned to Eric directly at the very first zoning hearing like this, I said that for us, this is not a dispute between neighbors. Our neighbors are the best. Simply put, it isn't fair to live next to a triplex when we thought we purchased a home on an R1 street, and were he in our place, I was sure he would also fight the variances. This is a matter of zoning and fairness. If we wanted to build a rental unit in back, we would not be allowed. But a legal rec room is to be legalized as a third rental unit on an R1 street? Where is the logic in that? If you want greater density, and this is something that makes sense in this day and age, let's do it with input from all constituents and through the legal political process. We have submitted many full-length letters, not a list of signatures on a petition, of constituents who are against the variances, and they explain why. Signatures really don't demonstrate what and if the signers understood about this issue. The two neighbors, one behind and one in front of the property, changed their support once they understood, understood the entire issue. But this is not a popularity contest or how many people can take time off work to come here. This is about, this is about our legal system fairness and upholding zoning.
Thank you, ma'am.
Here are letters. Can I?
Sergeant Arms will get those from you and pass them around. Sergeant Arms will take care of that.
Can I have?
You're done, ma'am. Whatever you have, give Sergeant Arms. We have other speakers coming up. Mathis Chasenov, followed by Todd Elliott. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, good morning. Um, virtually the entire block here is made up of single-family homes, as you can see from the chart that, uh, photographed that will be passed out. Uh, the same is true of the adjacent streets. Uh, the applicants want to add a third unit to their duplex in an R1 zone. Uh, at least 50 homeowners have, have written opposing these variances, including, uh, the one behind, the one across the street, and the one next door. Uh, and also opposing is the South Carthay Neighborhood Group, which has more than 200 members, and their letter is also in the file. Uh, there's no hardship here. There are no special circumstances here. No one else has rights that have been denied to the applicant. This will be detrimental to the public welfare, and it will also, it will also affect the general plan by opening the floodgates to more of the same, and I'm quoting from the zoning administrator who said that. Granting these variances would be illegal, unwise, and unfair. We all want to maintain the city's housing stock. Let's not do it helter-skelter. Otherwise, why have zoning at all? Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Elliott, followed by Mary Louise Morgan.
Good morning, members of the city council. Honorable members, I am Todd Elliott of Truman and Elliott, the attorney representing the applicants, um, of the property. I appreciate the council's time in listening to this small but important matter. We are asking the central, um, the council to find that the Central Area Planning Commission abused its discretion in not approving the requested variances and adjustments before you, as the findings for this request can be made. We have submitted to the council through the council office detailed findings to approve the legalization of this 790-square-foot unit. Let me offer you some quick background. Our clients purchased this property in 2006. Um, the subject property has been continually registered with the city's housing department as a rental unit. The unit is separately metered and has all necessary life and safety requirements. While the dwelling unit was a legal recreation room, it has been continually used as a dwelling unit since 1992. Um, this case turns on the ability of the council to make the findings of facts, fact that are necessary, and I want to elucidate two important considerations here. There are special circumstances that apply to this property. This subject lot is substantially larger than other lots in the area. It is a corner lot. The lot is irregularly shaped, and the property is also unique in its construction, which includes a four-car garage serving the three units at the property. I also want to note that this case is not precedential. It does not open the floodgates to, uh, legalizing other units in the city of Los Angeles because there are unique circumstances to this particular location, the topography of the property, and this will not create a precedent. Variances are evaluated on their individual merits, and because of the unique circumstances applicable to this property, the necessary findings of fact, which are before you, can be made. In conclusion, we would just like to ask that the city council support the request, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have on behalf of the property owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Perfect timing, sir. Mary Louise Morgan, then Robin Jameson, Jamison. Two minutes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you for this opportunity to, um, present this case before the city council. My name is Mary Louise Morgan, and I am currently the chair of the Carthay Center, Carthay Square, I'm sorry, Carthay Square Neighborhood Association Steering Committee. This, uh, matter came to the steering committee. We were asked to consider whether to support this variance, and, uh, the purpose being to legalize the unit, which had been occupied for approximately 20 years. Uh, the steering committee reviewed the request and the circumstances and, um, uh, supported the variance. The third, uh, unit, as I noted, had been occupied, have existed for 20 years and have been occupied during that time. Uh, there has never been a complaint about the wall or the parking. Um, the third unit is not ver, uh, viewable from the street, and that is important to us, as we have applied for HPOZ. And, um, and there would be no change to the structure of the building itself. Then the appeal, uh, it went to appeal after that time. Uh, I, I want to point out that I live only 400 feet from this unit, and I have lived in the same residence 51 years. I have never, up until this time, I was not even aware that that unit was being rented. There have been no complaints revolving, revolving around that unit. Uh, there has been no, um, increase in parking or traffic, and there's ne, never been any sense of increased density. Um, I'd like to point out that this is a corner unit, and we find in this block single-family homes, two duplexes, and one fourplex. In addition, there are, there are two, possibly three, units, duplexes that have third units.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Robin Jamison, followed by Brad Stokes. Again, two minutes, please.
Good morning. My name is Robin Malikian-Jamison. I live at 1043 Point View Street. I'm reading a letter written by Doug Marseille, who lives in the property directly behind the unit in question. To the Los Angeles Central Area Planning Commission, I'm writing this letter as a follow-up letter to my initial letter of January 4th, 2011, in support of Eric Hamerland and Terry Valines, who have requested a variance with the city of Los Angeles for a third unit at their property at 1101102 Sterns Drive. I have lived at 1105 South Point View Street, directly behind their property, for over 25 years. I wanted to make clear that shortly after this third unit was constructed as a recreation room in 1992, 1993 by a prior owner, it was subsequently converted to a dwelling unit. The unit has been occupied continuously since that time. The existence of the third unit has never posed a problem with regards to parking or any other complaints whatsoever since that time. Eric and Terry are very responsible property owners and have immaculately, immaculately maintained and improved their property since they purchased it in 2006. Again, I see no reason why they should be refused their request regarding the third unit. Most sincerely, Doug Marseille. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Brad Stokes.
I'll be very fast. Brad Stokes, I'm at 1080 Sterns Drive, which is directly across the street from the owners of this unit. And I've never experienced a parking problem or any safety problems, to my knowledge. And they've been nothing but great owners, and for six years, this has just been a unit that you wouldn't even know existed in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Sher. Haley Mandell. And then Valerie Sax. In that order, please. Two minutes.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Sher, and I'm the current resident of the subject unit for the last two and a half years. The unit is in excellent condition, and I would like to let you guys know that I have my own meters for utilities, a separate mailbox, and all of the items of a regular-quality apartment unit. I appreciate your consideration of this variance, as there are special circumstances that allow you to approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Haley Mandell. Valerie Sax. Paula Hollins. And our final speaker, Scott Katchiv.
Hello. My name is Haley Mandell. I've lived at 1100 Sterns for over seven years. The guest house in question is 10 feet from my bedroom. It has been occupied the entire time that I have lived there, even before Eric and Terry purchased the property in 2006. All the tenants that have been there have been kind, quiet, and courteous. One of the most important things to me when I moved in was the parking situation. Parking has never been a problem at any time of day or night, weekends, or during the week. I brag about how lucky I am to live in such a beautiful home with landlords that take such good care of their property, their tenants, and contribute so positively to our community. I have a group of friends that have literally begged to get on the list of potential renters of that guest house because it is so beautiful, well-maintained, and reclusive. Please don't tear down a beautiful home that has existed in this community for 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Sax. Then Paula Hollins. Two minutes.
Hello. My name is Valerie Sax. I'm here on behalf of Donna and Matt Chazanov, the neighbors immediately adjacent to the applicants for the variance. This case was thoroughly vetted at the zoning administrator level and again before the APC. The applicants don't deserve a variance. This case just doesn't meet the requirements. We have submitted a pile of letters and documents that lay out these arguments and provide supporting legal and factual authority. Very briefly, I want to contravent a few misstatements. It's very frustrating to have to hear over and over again a bunch of misstatements and unsubstantiated allegation from a applicant's representative and other supporters. If you want the facts, there's a huge pile of documents in the city file that refute these statements, and I also have a big stack, again, which there also is a bunch of stuff we uploaded or that's uploaded. It's only been occupied as a residence since -- as a dwelling unit, excuse me, as a rental since 2006. The Carthay Square Neighborhood Association did support this, but we were never invited to the meeting. On the other hand, the South Carthay Square Neighborhood Association does not support it, and the applicants never went to the official neighborhood council. As Angelina knows, we want the zoning code to be respected. It does not respect the zoning code to bend the rules as far as they would have to be bent in order to approve the variances here. As environmentalists, we want SEQA to be respected. If this case is approved, it will set a precedent, and many other such variances will follow that will lead to cumulative impacts, which require study under SEQA. At minimum, the categorical exemption that was issued for this decision, while sufficient for a denial, is clearly insufficient for an approval, and Eevee must be submitted and reviewed before any variance can issue, it also needs a variance under the baseline mansionization ordinance. It also concerns us as taxpayers. The city just lost a case not dissimilar to this one. I'm referring to the Habbad case. And, you know, the city has enough on its hands without going out on a limb to approve variances that it clearly should not be approving, and there is no gray area in the law here. The law clearly supports the denial of the variance, and we ask that you uphold the APC's and the ZA's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Hollins.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Paula Hollins, and I live at 1129 South Point View Street. I have lived here for 10 years. I'm here to support Terry and Eric and encourage you to grant the legalization of their unit. Terry and Eric are wonderful neighbors, responsible neighbors. In addition, their unit is totally hidden from the street. You would never know there was a third unit. The unit does not impose any aesthetic impact on the neighborhood at all. Also, the property is totally, totally compatible with the neighborhood. It's an older neighborhood, and there are many multifamily buildings nearby, many, many multifamily units nearby. Further, it has existed as a rental since 1992, and there is always parking on the streets. There's never been any complaints. There's never any parking problems, and we would like for it to maintain the way it has been since 1992. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Katchiv. And that is our final public speaker. And then we'll go to Mr. Reyes. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. I'm here in support of Eric and Terry's will. I live at 1142 Sterns Drive, just down the block from them. I've lived in that neighborhood for about 10 years. Like the folks that spoke before me, the triplex, I had no idea that it existed. The property is immaculate, and it's been kept immaculate since I've lived in the neighborhood. Prior to our neighborhood being downzoned from R2 to R1, several triplexes, duplexes, and fourplexes had been built over the course of the last 70 or 80 years. If the concern is for parking in our neighborhood, we have plenty of parking. There's no restrictions on our parking, other than street cleaning. In the time that I've been there, I can't imagine that this would have any impact on any of our adjacent neighbors. I ask that you guys consider the variance, as Terry and Eric are good neighbors. They look after their property. I would enjoy their continued tenancy in the area as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reyes, then Mr. Kurets.
Thank you, Council President. Ask the staff to please come to the table. Colleagues, we had deliberated on this, Councilor Weisar and Councilman Corrian, for a good amount of time. We wrestled with the information, the data, and we were trying to look at a foundation by which we could make a decision. And at that moment in time, the way it was being evaluated basically put us in a place where we heard and understood the council office's position. It was very focused on the notion of what is being impacted by the surrounding neighbors. The surrounding neighbors, or at least the majority that were there, were in support, but we had a few that were against. And so it put us in an awkward place. But I'd like to ask the staff if we can speak to the findings, because that is what became one of the critical variables in how we move forward in this decision. So can you speak to the findings that you're going to be presenting today?
Good morning. Lynn Wyatt, Chief Zoning Administrator, here on behalf of Sue Chang, who is the zoning administrator of record. There are five findings that you have to make in regards to a variance. They have to do with special circumstances, hardship, impact on adjoining properties, the ability to have and enjoy a benefit that's available to other property owners, as well as consistency with the general plan. In Ms. Chang's review of the application that was before her, she looked at the whole of the evidence and the record, as well as testimony that was given to her at the public hearing. And looking at that, I think what she may have done is to place a certain weight or emphasis on the two initial findings, which have to do with hardship and special circumstances, while also looking at the other three findings. She may have weighed her findings, giving a little more emphasis to those particular findings. I think when you look at the administrative record and what's before the council today, which is what the zoning administrator had before her, is that the council today has to look at how they want to balance those findings. And you need to look at what the councilman is now presenting is looking at a more equitable balance, perhaps. And so I think that's what you need to look at today when you make your findings in regards to taking an action.
And can you give us your name and position again?
Lynn Wyatt, Chief Zoning Administrator.
So you're the chief zoning administrator who oversees the zoning administrators who are practicing with you?
Correct.
And in your assessment as chief zoning administrator, you feel that by looking at all five evenly, that this body has circumstances before them that could be weighed from a different light, as opposed to it being focused on the first two?
Correct. I think, again, you have to look, you have the same evidence before you. You have to reflect on the same evidence and not new evidence. And you also have to identify how the zoning administrator aired. And I think that is the particular error that is before you that you need to judge today, as if she aired based on her emphasis on the findings. Again, when you look at this Wes Chandler case that some of the opponents have brought forward, the circumstances are somewhat different than Wes Chandler. As much as the findings still have to be made, the circumstances in regards to that case, there was a totally different proposal that was taken before the council on the day of the review. It was not aired to the others involved and the interested parties that day. I think the circumstances here are somewhat different. But again, you do have to make findings in regards to aired and abused discretion, as well as that it's based on the evidence in the record that was before the zoning administrator.
And that I truly appreciate. I do not want to take away from the integrity of this process. It's been alluded to by others earlier in public comment that we would essentially be ignoring and/or dismissing the role of your function. But as chief zoning administrator, I am putting a lot of weight on your observation, but also on the weight of the councilman of the district, who was voted by his constituents to represent that area, given the balancing that needs to occur between differing points of view. In particular, this case, we've heard that those who are surrounding the area, a good number are essentially accepting the triplex. A few are not, but given the way you're weighing these findings, that we are now in a different light.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. I would encourage to follow the observations of the chief zoning administrator. And I'd like to, Councilman Kurets, I want to make sure we went through this discussion because this information we did not have in committee.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Kurets.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Just a few things about the item before us. This request is supported by the local homeowners association, the Carthay Square. There are several different associations in the area, all with the name Carthay. The one actually where the home is located has the support of their homeowners association. All three units have been occupied since 1993. This unit is not visible from the street. Parking exists on site. The unit is needed for housing in the community and has caused no harm to anyone since 1993, when it was occupied. The unit has a longstanding approval by DWP, although not by Department of Building and Safety, which adds to the confusion. The ownership changed around 2005. The conversion was done by a former owner. Colleagues, I 245 this item out of a strong concern for preserving existing housing and a strong disagreement with our staff over this particular case. I ask that we overturn the Central Area Planning Commission's decision and approve the variance with the findings and conditions that have been distributed to you. I feel the zoning administrator aired in weighing of the evidence and weighing the value of this particular housing unit, the unique circumstances of the lot, and their concern about future cases when all that is before us is this one unique case. To summarize what is before the council is whether we legalize a third unit on this property, where two existing units have permits, and the third was permitted as a recreation room in 1992 and illegally converted to a dwelling unit shortly thereafter. Mr. Reyes held an extensive hearing in his committee but wasn't able to reach a consensus, and so I'm happy to clarify these issues as best as possible and answer any questions you might have. My office has prepared revised findings, which were submitted to the clerk and have been distributed. The core issue here is do we retain a unique housing unit on a unique lot through a variance that only applies on this property, or do we ignore our housing element policies, eliminate a unit that has existed for years and is not harming the community, and kick a tenant out onto the street? I would say the best policy, the most humane thing to do, and the action that is in line with our overall planning policies, is to grant this particular variance. I care about the issue because of the housing loss. I didn't know these owners before they came before my staff with this issue. I don't really know them from Adam. I wouldn't even recognize them. But legalizing this unit is just the right thing to do. The local homeowners association agrees, as do many of the neighbors. Some other neighbors disagree. So we just have to look at the impacts, look at the special circumstance, and make the decision the best decision possible. And I'll speak to the findings on my next go-around.
Well, your next go-around's coming up because no one else is on it. Well, you're up again. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Good.
No one else is on the queue?
Perfect. We have to make this decision based on five findings. The first finding is that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code. This property contains three units. They have existed since around 1992, and they serve as functional housing. They had an approval from DWP but not from Building and Safety. The action before the council is whether to legalize the unit or prompt its removal as a dwelling unit. Our housing regulations discourage evictions. Our housing element discourages eviction and specifies that retaining existing housing is a core goal of our regulations. Without this variance, there's no practical way to maintain this unit. There's a hardship imposed upon the tenant and the property in that a unit would be lost that was created by a prior owner and now serves as necessary rental housing. The second finding is that there are special circumstances attributable to this property. The special circumstances include that one city agency okayed the unit when another did not, that the lot is a large corner lot, much larger than the required lot size, as well as larger than the average lot in the area. Furthermore, the arrangement of the buildings on the lot are unique in that the unit is not visible from the street, and four parking spaces exist for the units. The third finding is that the variance is necessary for a property right or use enjoyed by other properties. This neighborhood includes single-family, duplex, and multifamily structures. The continued use of this unit as housing is consistent with other properties in the greater neighborhood. The variance is necessary for the continued enjoyment of housing for its occupant and the property owner. The fourth finding is very apt in this instance, that the variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare in the area. It is not and will not be detrimental. The property has existed for over 10 years and provides a social and economic benefit through the provision of housing. The structure is attractive, adequate parking exists, and loss of the unit would result in a significant detrimental impact by evicting a tenant and a net loss of rental housing in the area. The fifth finding is that this action will not adversely affect the general plan. Here, we have a strict interpretation of the zoning code that is in conflict with the intent of our zoning code and general plan. The first objective in the Wiltshire Plan is to, quote, "provide for the preservation of existing quality housing and for the development of new housing to meet the diverse economic and physical needs of the existing residents and expected new residents," unquote. Our housing element instructs us in Goal 1 to create, quote, "a city where housing production and preservation result in an adequate supply of ownership and rental housing that is safe, healthy, sanitary, and affordable to people of all income levels, races, ages, and suitable for their various needs," unquote. Colleagues, I would ask you to find that this is exactly what we were doing with this action. The council must find the following: that the zoning administrator aired or abused in their discretion. Based on the record and evidence is made available to the zoning administrator in making her findings, and is now being reconsidered by the council, provides evidence to support the council district's finding. Zoning administrator aired by placing considerable emphasis on two of the five required findings, those related to hardship and unique circumstances, without giving equal status to those findings addressing, number one, preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right or use, generally possessed by other property in the same zone and vicinity; number two, that the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the same zone or vicinity in which the property is located; and number three, that the variance will not adversely affect any element of the general plan. The zoning administrator aired in disqualifying comparable sites presented in the record that the council district believes to be relevant and that establish a basis to support their findings.
Thank you. We do have two more on the queue that came up. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you again, Council President. Colleagues, I did step out for a few moments, because I know we're being filmed. And there is a speaker in the restroom. There's a speaker right here where we take our photographs, so I was listening to the session. That being said, and that's for the record, I just want to emphasize is that this structure was there since 1992. It was essentially part of that neighborhood fabric, part of that street, part of that block. So I want to emphasize that. Two is, when we go through these discussions, each one of us has the ability to engage our constituents, and we make decisions based on a balancing point. A balancing point that speaks to the types of findings that are being discussed today. So I want to thank the chief zoning administrator for putting on the record their position based on the discussions that have evolved since the beginning of this process. And I just want to emphasize the following as part of the motion that's before us, and I'm echoing what's already been said, but I want to be very clear. The council must find that the zoning administrator aired or abused in their discretion, based on the record and evidence as made available to the zoning administrator in making her findings and is now being reconsidered by the city council. The record provides evidence to support the council district's findings. So with that, I would encourage an eye vote in supporting Councilman Corretts, and we move forward on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. Corretts once again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, for that thoughtful analysis as chair of the Planning Committee. It means a lot to hear your opinions. I thought the super zoning administrator lady made it very clear that there are other options. That's what we're elected for, is to sit here and make decisions sometimes when the process itself requires us to do it. What I care about the most, everybody knows this, every developer knows this, everybody knows everything about where I start on things. Immediate neighbors matter the most. Immediate neighbors, for the most part, saw no issue with it. It's been there since 1992. The present owners bought it as it was, like, I would say, maybe 80,000 to 100,000, what we call granny units exist in this city. Since I've been on this council, I've been trying to find a way in which we can bring them out of the dark into the light, make sure that the safety and health issues are addressed, not with the codes of 2011, but with the reality of these people living there that have no other housing. I don't want to throw these people out on the street. How are we going to house our people? We have 75,000 to 100,000 people living in these kinds of units. I hope the day will come when we create a new law that grandfathers, grandmothers, a lot of these end if they meet codes in terms of electricity and water and all of that. This is a case where Mr. Corretts met with the neighbors, met with the community, met with the owners. I don't know these people at all, other than what I heard here in front of us. And I'm supporting you, Mr. Corretts, because this is what our councils to do, is look at issues, balance it out, and when the zoning administrator said what she said, that we have the ability to act on it, and Mr. Reyes said the same thing, you have my support on this. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, colleagues. I move to adopt the variance with the distributed findings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Parks, I think you have to leave the room for this vote.
And for the record, I'd advise Mr. Parks to leave, since he did not hear the beginning of today's hearing.
Nothing personal, Mr. Parks. There you go. Mr. Cardenas, you had a question? Okay. All right. On that matter, then, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well, thank you. That matter passes, Mr. Corretts. Next, before we go to the next item, Mr. Wesson, you want to do something with number four?
And I want to continue it.
Okay, let's open the roll on number four to reconsider, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Wesson, till when? Continue number four for one week, October 11th. That'll be the directive. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Council President. Can we reconsider item 13 and continue for one week?
On number 13, open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Number 13, continue for one week without opposition. Mr. Weezer, what do you want to reconsider?
Thank you, same thing. Number three, reconsider and continue for one week. We've got a payment plan for our lien that was assessed.
Open the roll on number three for reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And reconsider number three without opposition. I think that clears up that part. We can bring Mr. Parks back. Thank you, Mr. Parks, for returning. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item 33, 35, call special for cards.
Thirty-five. John Walsh, number 35, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Facebooking at Mickey Jackson. Item 35, maybe we could, this is the rent escrow account program. I'm going to be brief. Never in my life have I seen this city council spend over one hour and 15 minutes on the previous item and then vote 11 to nothing. There is no city council in America that spends time on nothing.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this.
I'm talking about rent. I'm talking about rental properties. And I would like a confirmation. Do you run the meeting, or does Trutanich run the meeting? Do you decide?
No, no, wait, Mr. Walsh, please stay on the subject. It's, number 35 is the reprogram on two locations. The reprogram, Mr. Walsh.
I'm telling you right now, that you made fools of yourself on the last item.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, thank you for your comments. We appreciate that. With that matter, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 36, called special by Councilmember Perry.
Number 36, Ms. Perry.
And cards.
And I don't see a card on number 36. I have no cards on 36.
Okay, do we have any, do we have any staff here on this item?
Pardon me, Ms. Perry?
Do we have any staff here on item 36?
Staff on 36?
Yeah. This was a contract to maintain Maguire Gardens.
I think some ladies are coming forward.
Yeah, we've got some folks here. Okay, good.
I do not have any cards. Is there anyone in the audience here for number 36? Seeing none? And there are no cards on 36.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Garcetti is going to resume the chair, and Ms. Perry.
Thank you. I want, I just wanted you to set forth for the other council colleagues, the key differences between this proposed agreement today and what the commission did in August, to show how it has been improved substantially. And in answering that question, let us know whether the public will see a difference in the maintenance of the gardens, Maguire Gardens, as a result of the reduced dollar amount of this contract, and also whether the department can use the $100,000 in savings for constituent services.
Correct. This is the lands, this is a contract to provide landscape maintenance of the landscapes surrounding the Central Library. This was brought about from the renovation of the Central Library in 1985, where the city entered into several contracts with, at that time, the developer, Maguire Partners. And since that time, we've been in various landscape agreements. The city is responsible for the costs of the landscaping. Maguire Partners is responsible for maintaining the landscaping. The latest contract had gone to the city council in August. At that time, Councilwoman Perry questioned the 2% escalator clause, and she had asked the department to look into that. The escalator clause was due to the annual increases in wages that Maguire Partners paid their contractors and the material, the increase in material costs. However, we sat down with them, and they agreed, Maguire agreed, to remove the 2% escalator clause and also reduce the contract by 10%. That generated a savings of $101,987 during the term of the contract. So the savings will be going to core services for the library.
Well, I want to say thank you very much for your work in getting that reduction for us, and then for the savings that you have achieved. Would we, how would we be able to use that or reallocate that, for example, into constituent services?
We'd probably buy more library materials for all the libraries, and especially those in Ninth District.
Okay. Well, colleagues, they did, I think they've done a good job here in being more realistic and making sure the maintenance is maintained at the current levels that it is maintained, because it is a beautiful garden, and it is highly trafficked, and is a real focal point for not only tourists, but for people downtown and those attending the library. And it's essential that it remains at the level that it remains, but we needed to be realistic about the price that we pay. So thank you very much for your good work, and I hope that you'll give an eye vote on this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Any other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 39, called special for cards.
John Walsh on item 39.
John Walsh, blogging at Walsh Confidential, Mickey's Point of View, and HollywoodHighlands.org. We're 100% in favor of 39, and as of right now, only one city councilman is taking the tour, and that's Miss Design. The tour will begin in a few minutes. Thank you of Occupy LA.
And we'll close the public comment on 39. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And thank you, Mr. Weezer, for opening up the Tom Bradley Room to our chief petty officers of the United States Navy. We appreciate you.
President, and thank you for your service in the United States Navy.
You got it. The chief petty officers run this country's navy. With that, let's go ahead and go to announcements, or do we have any housekeeping before that? Okay. Folks, do we have any announcements? All right, housekeeping. We'll get housekeeping first.
Council has motions for post and referral.
Those are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zion requests to leave by 11:45 a.m. on October 5th for city business. A motion is required.
All right, I'll move that. And Ms. Perry seconds, and Mr. Zion is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to arrive by 11:00 a.m. on October 19th for city business, and that meets council policy.
She's excused.
Councilmember Labonge requests to be excused on October 18th and 19th for city business, and that meets council policy.
All right, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Alakon requests to be excused on October 25th for personal business, and that meets council policy.
All right, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused November 2nd for personal business, and that meets council policy.
All right, that excuse is granted as well.
That clears the desk.
All right. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks? Okay, adjourning? Okay, if there's no announcements, can I ask everybody, please rise for our adjourning And like to recognize Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask all members to join me in asking for a adjourning motion in honor of my uncle, retired Colonel Anderson Howell Parks Jr. Howell was remembered in many ways as a brother, uncle, cousin, coach, counselor, friend, and mentor. He's had stories about him, of being with him, and he would have a few of his own to add. He was the most proud of being a retired colonel in the United States Air Force, former director of Parks and Recreation at Will Rogers Parks, an agent for the L.A. County Probation Department, a travel agent and tour guide, a cruise line specialist, a photographer, an artist, a part-time movie extra. He was truly a Renaissance man and a world citizen. He was the fourth of nine children. Anderson Howell Parks Jr. was born in Watts, California neighborhood in Los Angeles, June 26, 1925, to Anderson and Anna Ellis Parks. He attended Great Elementary School, and upon promotion was selected to participate in the Special Youth Leadership Program at Roosevelt High School in East Los Angeles. In high school, he excelled in sports, participated in student council, and was elected student body president in his senior year. After high school, he joined the U.S. Calvary as a mounted soldier. These were the latter days of the Calvary, and an unfortunate accident required him to be discharged. After healing, he enlisted in the U.S. Air Force. As a young officer in 1948, on a trip to San Francisco, he met and married his wife, Laverne. Although they had no children of their own, they mentored and provided financial support to a number of youth they met in their professions. Laverne was a longtime administrator with the L.A. Unified School District. As many as a dozen kids were put through the University of California at Los Angeles or Cal State University at L.A. They were proud of these students' achievements in the field of education, medicine, law, and business. He received a bachelor's degree in social scientist from the Cal State, Los Angeles, and in 2000, he was awarded an honorary doctorate degree from Pepperdine University. Howell was preceded in death by his parents, his sister Solone, Odessa, and Miller, his brother Earl, William, and Delbert. He survived by his sisters Sabina, Perry in Inglewood, and his sister and brother-in-law Dolores and Richard Davis in Sacramento, and his sister-in-law Gertrude Parks. His repast, a funeral was today, and the repast will be later at the Briarwood Community Room at 3500 West Manchester in Inglewood. We asked all members.
We'll put all members on that. We're sorry for your loss, Mr. Parks. Mr. Zion wanted to think, say something as well?
I have an adjourning motion.
Oh, adjourning motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry M. Greenblatt passed away September 26th. Larry's the older brother of my longtime deputy, Sherri Adams. Sherri has been with my office for 10 years and with the City of Los Angeles for 42 years. Her brother Larry M. Greenblatt, longtime resident of Thousand Oaks, passed away on Monday, September 26th. Larry was born in Akron, Ohio, December 9th, 1933. New, moved to Los Angeles with his family in '47, attended Dorsey and L.A. High School, played baseball for UCLA, received law degree from both UCLA and Loyola Law School, served the United States Army stationed in Hawaii. Wanted to serve the public, worked as a work comp lawyer, became presiding judge of Ventura County for over 30 years. Married to his wife, soulmate Barbara, in 1958, two children, Karen and Mark, who continue to live in Thousand Oaks and Camrio. Funeral services were held at 10 a.m. on Friday, September 30th, at Pierce Brothers in West Lake Village. Survived by his wife of 52 years, Barbara, six grandchildren, Wiley, Samuel, Rachel, Lindsay, Haley, Ashley, daughter and son, Karen and Mark, daughter-in-law Jennifer, son-in-law Michael, sisters Phyllis, Sherri Adams, and nieces Desiree, Nicole, and nephew Charles. May he rest in peace, Larry M. Greenblatt.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Are there any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and call the roll, and this will next be in session tomorrow, October 5th, Wednesday, 10 a.m. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Stay dry and have a good day.